... January 9th at 7:02. Happy New Year 2018. I can have a motion to call the meeting to order.
So moved.
So moved on Mr. Harris.
Second.
Second by Ms. Canfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Benny Watkins this evening. Will, come on up. You know the drill, just name the address for the week.
Yeah, sure.
David Ball, Rebecca Road. Good evening.
Good evening.
I just wanted to come in and speak just for a minute about how impressed I was with the way the town responded to the storm last Thursday.
Thank you.
I'm not going to take much of your time, but I thought it was important from my perspective anyway. I'm not speaking for whole neighborhoods, but I think I can speak for my own. I was very pleased and impressed how the town dealt with the storm last Thursday. The day before the storm, Fire Chief John Murphy called me and told me he was besensing our timely storm alerts. I assured him that we would get them out through the Situate Coastal Coalition, so those went out, should have gone out to about 2,000 people. Kevin Cafferty and Jim Boudreaux, who I just met that morning, they were driving around checking things out. I was impressed with Mr. Boudreaux's very quick, you know, the very quick time I had speaking to him. The messages sent out by the town were very timely and informative. I was impressed by how Chief Murphy planned for and handled the situation. I was impressed by how DPW prepared for the storm, and I was impressed with the town and private plow snow operators. One of my concerns before the storm was if people decided to leave, they needed to get back to their property as soon as possible. Crews worked all night opening up roads to make that happen. I know the fire chief and police chief coordinated that. From what I could see, everybody had their shutter systems in place, and that resulted in less structural damage. The one concern I had is that this tide was somewhat comparable to the height of the tide in 1978, but the two storms are not comparable in terms of the power of the blizzard of '78. In '78, the waves were over 30 feet right offshore. In this storm, they were maybe 15 to 17 feet, and it was only a one-tide event, as opposed to a two or three tide cycle for 1978. But I just wanted to let you guys know that I was really impressed. I want to thank everybody for everything I did.
Dave, we appreciate you coming in. That's very nice of you to take the time to commend them.
No, I thought it was important.
They did a great job.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thanks, Dave.
You too, Dave. Good night. So I should have welcomed our new town administrator first before I did walk in, so I apologize.
It's okay.
So, New Year 2018. We welcome Jim Boudreaux. Jim, welcome.
Thank you.
We're happy to have you start.
Glad to be here.
Great. And I think you were baptized by fire for the past week, so we'll move right to the report of the town administrator.
I'll be very brief for my first one. Interesting first four days. I had a lot of people calling me and said, "You started on Tuesday, and by Wednesday you're taking a six-inch snowstorm, made it a blizzard." But very impressed by the work that was done by the DPW, the police, fire, all the responders. The snow cleanup went very well, as we spoke last week. It was about what we expected, maybe a little worse flooding than we expected. But Kevin's crew did an outstanding job getting it cleaned up. Police and fire were fantastic. Tomorrow, if you see us down the seawall, we actually have the Metro Law Enforcement Councilors coming in. They're going to bring in a drone tomorrow, and we're going to fly the seawall and the beach looking for damage, try something a little bit different. But, you know, first lesson I learned was I needed better boots to deal with a Situate storm, so we've taken care of that. But overall, a good first four days, very impressed by the emergency team down there. They did a fantastic job, and I just kind of rode along and saw what they were doing. So it was good. I enjoyed it.
Good. And if you don't mind, I'd love to comment, too. They did a terrific job, all the department heads, also SANS and the shelter folks, and even the day after, you know, Jennifer Keefe's office with the health department inspections, and the building department going out the day after. It was a busy couple of days for all of you, and I was really, really impressed by the cooperation, the coordination, the speedancy with the response effort. And of course, we would all be remiss not to mention how grateful we all are that Stephen Moan, our harbor master, is safe. It was a little...
Yeah. That was a little hairy for a bit.
Close call there. So, thank you. Anybody else want to add any comments?
I was just going to...
Where Jim goes on?
Where the chief had just walked in, he might want to just say something. I don't know, it's up to you.
Just echo your comments. I think they did a great job, all the way down from the volunteers, the shelters, to wherever, to everybody knew what they were doing. They got out there, and they knew we had to get a quick follow-up, we had to get cleaned up before it froze, and they all executed, from the firefighters, the police, DPW, dispatchers. Everybody had cleaned up after, it was outstanding. So, again, you know, a good execution. They were safe, which Jim's first weekend. Fully supportive of everything we did in there. You know, that's what we need to do, to basically do the job. Love trust, and that's appreciated.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I'll add is, all of us spent some time at the EOC during the event, and the coordination of stuff there, and the leadership in there, and really just the ability to have everything in one central area. We had National Grid there, we had the gas company there, obviously the fire police, town administrator, DPW. All these people coordinating all the activities from a central space with all the information on the screens above you was just really spectacular to me, and I thought, I was very impressed by putting that space into use in a real-life situation. You know, we've had other meetings there and stuff, but didn't really sense that. People coming in and out, communicating well, getting warm and heading back out to the storm. Very impressive. I thought, you know, I was really also impressed by just the amount of knowledge that the people and the workers in this town have. As Chief said, you know, knowing what to do, not really needing all the direction, but having the leadership there to direct them, and understanding the tides, and understanding the community, and getting where it had to be. And like Maura mentioned, the SANS operation, the shelter operation, you know, this, we were prepared for a lot worse, and I think we got lucky. Obviously, the flooding was bad, but the power stayed on, and that really made it an event, like Dave said, a one-tide event, which was, we were lucky. Thank you all for all you do for the town.
It's a great investment. Build up buildings, especially the EOC.
Absolutely. Anybody else?
And the only other thing that hasn't really been mentioned is the preparation, the days leading up to it. Poor Jim walked in, and he's like, "I'm busy, I'm starting, I'm getting ready for the storm." And that was, you know, two days before the event, and every department did that, so that when it hit, they knew exactly what they needed to be prepared for. And that was impressive, too.
Again, they know what they're doing, Kevin, Chief Murphy, Chief Stewart, all the departments. These guys know what they're doing, they didn't need to be getting in their way. I was just there to facilitate whatever they needed, and they had a plan, they put it in action, they executed it. We'll be cleaning up for a while. I've talked to Kevin, he's already expended about $125,000 on this storm. So the cleanup now will be mostly on straight time with our guys, but we still have some cleanup to do, but the critical stuff was done very timely, manner of the roads are open, the power was restored. So, you know, all in all, it could have been a lot worse, and the town did a fantastic job responding to it. So, and that EOC makes a big difference, to have all those people in one place, all the information comes into the same place, everybody gets it at the same time, and then they can react to it as a group. So it makes a big difference when you have that.
It did, and the town should be proud. You know, the head of MEMA was here, the governor Baker was here. They were very impressed with the center, and specifically mentioned that the proactive and the preparation that the town had in the operation clearly had a big impact on our response, so they were very impressed, too. So, the residents should be very proud of all of you. Thank you. Anything else?
No, right now we're just trying to have a normal day. Lot of meetings, and hopefully, starting tomorrow, Thursday, Nancy and I will be really digging into the budget and getting a handle on that, getting that ready for the board. So that's kind of my next priority, is to get that underway.
Do we know, how long does it take FEMA to determine whether or not it's this storm will meet federal...
They want all, they want some information back from us by the 24th. So general, basically, cost, this is general cost, and then sum it all up with all the communities and see if we actually qualify, and then we go to FEMA.
Was it declared?
This is part of the process, so it wasn't that clear, cut and dry.
Right.
So actually reaching out, they want information by the 24th of January back from us, they'll make a determination, go to FEMA and ask party if it reaches a certain threshold, and then have that FEMA awards it, and then we have to come back now, you have to diagnose projectees and really get to meet that down.
I don't think the governor declared it an emergency, though, did he, Chief?
Sorry?
The governor didn't declare it an emergency, did he?
No, you're not.
Yeah. So it's now, it's a damage threshold for FEMA.
So it's, you know, the whole coastline had flooded, or it's typically just a few towns around here, so we started to do everywhere, the highest tides around, 15-foot tides, so I have a feeling that's going to bring a lot more damage than we see right now. Probability of both, yeah, based on the storm that gets to the river.
Great. All right. You all set, Jim?
All set.
Okay, great. We're going to take an item out of order, just because Mr. Kelly has something to attend that takes him out of town, so we're going to take Kevin Kelly out of order, if folks don't mind, to discuss and vote the...
Demolition.
The demolition of the old police station, I can't even find it. So, 7:30? Yeah. For the best of abatement, sorry, Kevin. I couldn't have pointed in there.
That's all right.
I knew why you were coming.
Thank you. So, we're here to get a signature and approval for the contract for the demolition and abatement associated with the demolition for the old police station next door. You have a contract in front of you for $116,000 with Francesco Demolition Company from Duxbury, Massachusetts. There's also a bid sheet attached showing the one, two, three, four, five, six other bidders which supplied. We had nine people show up for the pre-bid, and six people supplied bid, and we're ready to go.
Just a question. Kevin, I know we had voted so much for abatement, so much for demolition. Was it 100, 150? And then what is, out of that, we already did...
It was an early number for exploratory work for, to identify all the hazardous materials.
Right.
And that was 20, I think, and then everything else was wrapped into the bigger number.
Okay.
So the abatement is wrapped into this 116.
It is.
Mm-hmm.
If I'm not mistaken, we voted about 250 for that.
We carried 250. This does not include the money that we need to move the servers and the electric, the fiber line from the school to fiber line to town hall, and the electricity associated out to the old sand shed.
So that's got to be done before the building comes down?
Right, we're in the middle of doing it now.
Oh, all right. It looks like he's ready to do it tomorrow.
Yeah, well, he'll be doing abatement work. It's probably going to take about two months by the time we start to finish. The first two or three weeks will be all inside doing abatement work, and they'll be removing materials and stuff that they'll be salvaging.
Okay. And when will that start? I mean, obviously, I have to...
He wants a key tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Right.
So just for purposes of disclosure, there were one, two, three, four, six bids, the highest being $273,730, and the lowest being 116. Big delta.
Mm-hmm.
Confident in the work that's going to be done?
Yes, very much.
Okay.
Yeah, they've been great so far working with them.
He's been doing this for a long time.
A long time, okay.
I know.
And what do you think the cost is of the other stuff? Are we going to be well under the budget, or the amount that we're...
I think so. We had associated some money to cover some of the infrastructure work on that, the electrical work and so forth, and we should, unless we find something that we don't know is there in the building itself as far as abatement, we should be well under the 250. Knock a wood.
Good.
John?
Kevin, have you actually looked at the cost or the possibility of using any excess to demo the sea wing over at the Gates Middle School, the old Gates?
Have not, have not at all, because I don't know what's going to be left, and separate hat, right?
I'd suggest take a look at it, and I think the board should consider it. The sea wing's not going to be useful for anything with the old Gates School. It's slab, it's really of no function, and I know when Tricia was here, that was one of the concerns I raised about using any excess money from the police station to demo it. So I'd really like to know what cost would be to demo that section of the wing of the school.
Yeah, is that wrapped into the new senior center project?
Not at all.
No?
No, that's one of the locations, the spots of it. So it's the side, the sea wing, which is the slab on the side of the right.
But to John's point, you could maybe ask Frank to go down and look at it.
Sure, get an idea. Slab on grade there, there's, the attachment to the existing building is not too exotic.
Heating, electrical, all that stuff, but...
Same, yeah. Anyway, thank you.
Okay.
Karen, did you have any questions?
Nope.
Okay. Take a motion?
Move to award a contract to Francesco Demolition of Duxbury, Mass. for the amount of $116,000 for the demolition of the old police station located at Chief Justice Cushing Highway.
Second?
Moved by Ms. Canfield, second by Mr. Harris. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, you're all set, Karen?
Thank you very much.
Kevin?
Thank you.
Hey Kevin, how's the move going into Gates for rec?
It's good. Wait, we're a little slow, we're a little behind schedule, just meeting, you know, things that we need to get done, but we're using the building, we just don't have rec in there yet.
So what's the date?
Right now, we're scheduled actually for next week. I just don't know if we can meet that, because we've had trouble getting our flooring contractors in there to do three floors. And also, we've had trouble getting the phone equipment and the computer things set up. The phone cutover and equipment cutover is scheduled for next Tuesday, but the physical equipment piece will not be done for another week after that. We can work around those things, but the biggest challenge is the three floors that aren't done yet.
So realistically, end of the month?
February.
Maybe before. Maybe before.
Is it a timing thing with the floor contractor?
Finding the right contractors, getting the right prices, getting people in there, weather issues, this cold snap, and then last week's weather definitely affected us. Just moving things around, it's just been a little bit of a challenge.
Anything you can do?
Yeah.
Great.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move back to the first item on the list, which is 715, even though it is, hey, 716, that's not too bad. Mr. Clapp for a special one-day liquor license for the winter's farmers market, the new farmers market at St. Luke's. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you this evening?
Good, thank you.
Welcome. So you're here to apply for a one-day liquor license. This seems to be a new event that's taking place at St. Luke's, and inside...
Seven.
Right, no, for the upcoming spring.
That's correct, yep. The manager of the market, the new market, contacted me, she had some of my product at other farmers markets, and invited me down as a winery to participate.
Okay. Great. Have you ever been at the Situate Farmers Market during the summer?
We have not, no. I own a small company called 1634 Meadery. We actually make honey wine up in Ipswich, and this is, we're trying to extend our business to the South Shore a little bit more, so this looks like a good opportunity for us.
So what are they doing? Are they having like a farmers market every Saturday then, at St. Luke's?
It's twice per month for three months, every, first Saturday and last Saturday of each month, yeah.
And so are they using the interiors, that kind of like, so you have shelter as a part of it?
That's correct, yep, that's correct.
Interesting. So what's happening, does anybody know what's happening to the one that's, obviously, it's just a summer season then?
Yeah, this just goes January, February through April, first weekend in April, April 7th. It's held from 8:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at St. Luke's Church. I think it's the first time they've done this.
I think it's a great idea.
Great idea.
I was thinking, hopefully, the organizers might try to coordinate with the other farmers' markets, so it could be a year-round, obviously with shelter indoors, I think that would be a great opportunity. Anyway, not you, but I'm just saying to the organizers, it's a great idea what you're doing.
It's exciting.
Tony, did you have any questions for Mr. Clapp?
Do you have all your licensing, and have you done this before?
Yeah, we've been in business for three years, and we do lots of farmers' markets. We've done, I think we did six this summer, and we've done several winter ones as well. So we're fairly experienced at, we do give samples, small samples, it's usually less than an ounce or so of wine samples under the farm winery laws, and then we sell bottles of the mead, yep.
He says honey wine?
That's correct, yeah, mead, yep.
Fine mead.
Sean, any questions?
No, no, he's answered them all.
Karen?
Right, you have all your documentation, so you'll be, you'll card the appropriate people and all of that.
That's correct. All of our servers are tips-trained and know all the rules and stuff like that. We have never had any issues, yeah.
Great.
Turn a motion?
Please.
I move the Board of Selectmen approve a one-day liquor license for Mr. Dan Clapp to sell and to conduct wine tasting at the South Shore Winter Farmers and Artisans Market, which takes place the first and last Saturdays of each month, starting January 27, 2018, through April 7, 2018, from 8:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at St. Luke's Church, located at 465 First Parish Road. The dates are as follows: January 27, 2018, February 3, 2018, February 24, 2018, March 3, 2018, March 31, 2018, and of course, April 7, 2018.
Second?
Moved by Ms. Dan, he's second by Ms. Vignani. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, Sarah, you're good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clapp.
Good luck.
Great opportunity. Hope to stop by and see it. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is a Boarding Committee appointment for the Public Building Commission. This is to appoint two council on aging members to the Public Building Commission to review the entire senior center process. So we asked Linda Hayes to submit candidates, and so J.D. Miller, who's the chairman, and Linda Hayes have both volunteered to be on it, so I think we just need to, a motion to appoint them? If anybody has any other questions?
No, I think the two very qualified people, the chair and the director, so...
Right. Anybody else?
No, no, it's great, no.
Right, so we'll take a motion, there are two separate motions, to appoint Linda and John.
I move to appoint Linda Hayes, the Council on Aging Director, as the Public Buildings Commission Senior Center User Member, for a term of three years or until a successor is named.
Moved by Ms. Dan, he's second by Ms. Vignani. All in favor?
Aye.
I further move to appoint John Miller, the Chairman of the Council on Aging, as the Public Buildings Commission Senior Center User Member, for a term of three years or until a successor is named.
Second?
Moved by Ms. Dan, he's second by Ms. Vignani. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all set. Thank you. Next on the agenda, Chief, Chief Murphy, for some fire department contracts. We're going to be reviewing just tonight the power load system stretcher from Striker for $66,000.
Yes, good evening. Mara, did we skip? So, first of all, this came from a grant that was AFG grant, Assistance to Firefighters grant. Lieutenant Cashman for our department writes most of our grants, so I got to give him the credit for executing the grant successfully. We received $100,000. The Striker power loads are basically electronic stretchers that go in the back of the ambulance. Part of this is a mandate now to have it for rollover protection. They've had some accidents in the past where the stretches actually came loose, so a new law started last July 1st, rollover protection has to be in anything new, but we wanted to go back and make sure our other ambulances have the same protection for our citizens going to the hospital. And also, it's going to reduce, the electronic part of the stretcher is hopefully going to reduce back injuries. We've had some injuries in the past with firefighters in the backs, some heavy people, so we can actually utilize the stretcher with buttons instead of your legs, so to go up and down. And then also, the component that's in the actual ambulance, you bring this up into the back, you click it in, and it sort of sucks the whole thing in, sucks the thing in, so there's no, it's a lot more, it's a smoother operation, safer operation, it's a lot more secure for the patients when they go in the hospital. So we found, we applied for this grant last year, we were successful in getting that, and the other part of the grant that we are not talking about tonight, we'll talk about, it does say, is the Lucas machines, which are basically CPR machines that do CPR automatically, just exactly what, 110 beats per minute. You just think about 20 to 25 minutes in the hospital, a paramedic or firefighter standing up doing CPR in the back of an ambulance, when you're taking turns and stops and this and that, it's dangerous, it's very fatiguing, and, you know, this Lucas machines here, we have one now that we keep in the captain's car, they have one in town, so if somebody's having a heart attack, but now we'll have three, we'll have two in the ambulances and one in the captain's car, in case they're both out of town, still have that capability with this tool to use. They're about $13,000 apiece, so we'll be back next meeting in two weeks to get approval for those, along with probably some batteries or a warranty extension. But right now, it's just for the power load stretcher system and the one caught, for a total of $66,965.83 to Striker, is the name of the company.
Does it include installation, Chief?
It does, yes. Yeah, the company that actually built our last ambulance is going to install it. They're going to take the old one out of the last ambulance, the older ambulance we have, renovate that, put a new one in there, and as well as the other ambulance we have now. So there's no loading system now, we have one power stretcher, so now we're going to add one more power stretcher and two loading systems, so both ambulances will have everything they need.
But does this include, this includes a stretcher as well, right?
Correct. One stretcher and two loading systems, because we did buy, Tony, we bought one new electronic stretcher the last purchase about a year and a half ago with our last ambulance, so...
Now, are they mobile, like, can you get into the woods, or can you get someone with this, or is it...
You know, we probably wouldn't go into the woods with it, but, I mean, they're pretty mobile, but, you know, you can get, do everything you had to do with the other stretches. It's really about, you know, the smooth transition up and down, saving your leg, saving your back, and then when you get to the ambulance, you should actually connect this, and it actually loads it all by itself, so there's no dropping it, any accidental droppings, and then again, when you go in the hospital, God forbid there was ever an accident, the rollover protection in this is really the big deal that's mandated by the state.
Does it work fast, John? Because I could imagine, you know, the firefighters can really get a person in an ambulance pretty quick, so does this move...
Yeah, the accident, the strong batteries, they go up and down, you know, at a safe speed, but fairly quickly, I don't see any lag time, Sean, with this, but, you know, obviously, if we can save some backs, some injuries, and taxpayer money, as well as, you know, give the patient a better transition to the hospital, it's money well spent, and fortunately, we were able to get a grant on this, so even better.
Great. Any questions? No, John, anything? All right. Take a motion?
Move to award a contract to Striker of Portage, Michigan, for the amount of $66,965.83 for the purchase of two power load systems and one Power Pro XT stretcher.
Second? Moved by Ms. Dan, he's second by Ms. Canfield. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
John?[1571.91] John? Thank you, Chief.
Good night.
See you, John.
Hopefully you're getting some rest.
Yeah.
Next on the agenda is a discussion of vote, disclosure municipal employee, Laura, Recreation, how are you?
I'm fine, how are you?
I'm great, welcome.
Thank you.
So, and this is a standard thing that we typically need to do, what is, what's the, what services the employee?
So the story is, his name is Tom Edwards, he works also in the voting machines over in the voting, and he also works for me about four or five hours a week running my pickleball program. So because it's two different departments, we disclose and you have to agree to it.
Okay.
I do the same thing in the summertime with the teachers, and the teachers work for me in the summertime for my camps, it's the same type of thing.
Yeah.
Those are the two, two things, the pickleball and the election worker.
And how about the?
Senior worker.
Senior worker buy down, yeah, for the treasure collector, he sends out the beach stickers maybe, or something.
Is there documentation on that?
Yeah, it's in here.
Okay, I didn't see it.
I didn't see it.
It's not next, but it's.
Oh, there it is.
I apologize, I couldn't see the names.
No worries.
It was out of order.
Well, we'll take a motion to approve once.
Motion?
Yes.
I'll move the Board of Selectmen, as required by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 268A, have reviewed the disclosure form from Thomas B. Edwards, who seeks to provide personal services to Situate Recreation. The exemption under Section 20B is approved for Thomas, or for the exemption under 20B to be approved for Thomas B. Edwards.
Second.
Move by Ms. Danahy, second by Mr. Harris, any additional questions? Nope, there being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara.
Thank you. They have a good time over there too, by the way.
You what?
They have a good time over there.
Playing pickleball? Yeah, good. All right, you might as well stay seated, because you're next also to talk about the naming of the Old Gates Gym. So this is bringing forth the discussion that we had a couple of weeks ago, I think, before our holiday break, with regards to naming the gym at Gates, and we all discussed naming it as it was originally.
You asked people to send me an email with their.
Did you get anything?
Did you get anything?
I received one email of someone that is in favor of naming it Veterans.
Memorial Gym?
Gym, whatever it is. And there were a lot of positive comments on Facebook, social media as well that I saw.
Okay, because I, nobody reached out to me, so.
No.
Yeah, I posted it on my Selectmen page and asked for feedback, and I probably got five or six people, and they all thought that it was a really worthwhile, it was, it made sense, and it was a good name.
Okay.
It was all positive.
But it was already that, so just do it again.
Exactly. Why make a big deal about it? Exactly. So the official name is what? The Veterans Memorial Gym?
So what your thoughts are, you know, you can have Situate Veterans Memorial Recreational Center, Situate Veterans Memorial Gym, I don't know, I think, I was going to leave that up to the board, what they thought would be, it's an awful lot to say, but obviously, it's going to be condensed to, or shortened to, something, but at least, you know, the official name would be Situate Veterans Memorial.
Yeah, I think it should be, I think, I think that's what they named the gym originally, so, and it's not quite a rec center yet, but.
Let's call it the gym, makes sense.
Any other comments, Sean or Karen?
No.
Laura, you, the difference between a gym and a rec center?
That's fine. All I'm thinking about are the tennis courts in the field out back for the identification for the GPS, it's the same thing that happened with the gym, they got confused with the gates up here, so it was always called the Gates Field, the Gates Tennis Courts, so once I move in there, I'm sure it'll be the rec.
Yeah, the rec.
Field, and yeah, it depends on what I name it, so I'll probably, because I permit them, I'll just, I'll direct fields or.
Makes sense.
You can just put in, use Veterans Memorial Gym on your GPS when you, when you schedule it.
Yeah.
Half my girls' basketball team was late for the game, because they were at the new place instead of the old place, so.
Did they forfeit? That's all I care.
No, we lost. Since you didn't win that game, we didn't forfeit.
A little boy we have.
Wasn't even on purpose either.
All right, I'll take a motion.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to name the former high school and former middle school, otherwise known as the Old Gates Gym, the Situate Veterans Memorial Gymnasium.
Second.
Move by Ms. Danahy, second by Ms. Vignani, any further discussion? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
You're all set.
Thank you. One question, you said something about a sign last time.
Yeah.
Can you maybe include rec department underneath it or something, so they know where we are?
I was thinking, and it's up to what everybody else thought, but I think ideally, a nice, a fairly large sign on the gymnasium wall should be there, but I think we should figure out signage for the rec department independently of that, or we put it on the gymnasium, but at least, because right now, you know, you got the stone wall, you got the Cudworth Bill House, you got the barn, it's going to be hard to figure out what's in there if you put a sign there unless it's high enough to be able to see the Recreation Department, so maybe.
Well, they can use Wi-Fi in the signs, I mean.
No, no, just generally for people, you know.
When they go into the building?
Yeah, to say where.
You guys can figure that out, right?
I think there needs to be a big sign that says Recreation Department.
Been a couple of places, they kind of don't even know where I am sometimes, so.
I agree, people should know.
Yeah.
For both directional, but also for identification, somewhere, I think it makes sense to put it somewhere.
Okay, terrific, thank you.
Laura, thank you.
Yeah, I'll take a second.
Thanks, Laura, have a great night.
Situate Recreation Department and.
The next agenda item for Fifty Country Way sewer requirements has been continued.
Oh, really?
So we won't be discussing that this evening, we were asked to continue that, the.
Sheepers, you're moving the salon, Madam Chairman.
Excuse me?
Yes, you're moving the salon, we're almost done.
I told you.
I'm like, 7:35, this is, we've got to take a picture of this.
We're not racing, we're just being.
All right, good, good.
Next on the agenda is a discussion and vote for the Collier Road Sewer Abatement, that's next.
I've got a lot to say about this.
You do.
An hour and a half.
Okay. So, is anybody coming forward with regards to this one?
No, it's pretty cut and dry. I received this from the assessor who retired, Steve, and from the Treasure Collector's office. Basically, it was two pieces of property that they sold, and is now becoming one piece of property, and they're putting a house on it. So going forward, the assessor's opinion and the Treasure Collector's opinion was that we adjust the remainder of the abatement for the second sewer connection.
So I was a little confused, because it used to be two properties.
Correct.
So when we do an abatement, or a betterment, we take all the properties, divide it by the project and assess that dollar amount, so now, because somebody bought two and they're putting one big house on it?
Right.
We should abate?
That was the recommendation of the assessor and the Treasure Collector.
So my recollection, Lorraine, you might not have been here, is that there was one around the corner on, I want to say Moreland, Sean, well, you probably might remember this, Tony, you probably do too, but there was an abatement issue on Moreland and the street that's perpendicular between Moreland and Collier, but I thought the difference was there were two non-buildable lots, and somehow.
Yes.
There was some kind of issue with both being assessed, and we did abate that, I thought, but I'm assuming these were two lots, is that what, they're merging?
Mm-hmm.
Why they're, put it to you this way, if you're going to have a lot, I assume if it's, I think if it's buildable, you get assessed a betterment for it.
That's right.
Because that's why it's, the stub's there.
That's right.
Just because they're merging it, they're suggesting that it should be only one, and that's why they're seeking, is that, am I correct?
It'll just be one sewer connection.
But to, like John said, when the, I wouldn't be surprised if there's a stub for that second lot, because when they laid the lines, if they came across a four main lot, they put stubs in for a future buildup, not like Fifty Country Way, but they put a stub in.
There's already a house there, they've been paying this since 2006.
Oh, they're willing to take tear the house down?
Yeah. They've been paying this since 2006 through 2017, so they're just looking to abate from 2018 to 2027.
But, you know, I.
They're using a lot of stuff.
Well, I thought it was pretty clean cut before this, but, so, so in other words, if someone anywhere on town sewer decides to buy the next door neighbor's house, tear it down, we should give them an abatement?
That was my question.
And they want, and they want a lodge, they want to put, you know, tennis court there or something, whatever, so they have, they want to increase the size of their property, like the one I showed you on Gilson Road, they didn't ask for an abatement, I know for a fact.
I mean, I haven't done this in four years, but Steve did say it was appropriate to do this, so.
But is it fair to, like to Tony's point, is it fair to the other people that?
I was likely to believe it wasn't the first time it happened, but I don't know that much.
Yeah, I don't, Laura had asked me earlier, and I don't remember.
Is there a time constraint on this, Lorraine?
What's that?
Is there a time constraint on this?
No, we can look into it further.
You might want to, just to get, I want consistency for what we did around the corner, because I mean, if, if we've done this before, and there was a justification for it, and they fall into the same category, I have no problems with that, but I wasn't sure if this was two buildable lots that they ended up getting assessed the betterment, and now they merged it, and then they're saying, well, we only want to pay one, I'm like, that's, unfortunately, that doesn't, I don't believe it works that way, in my opinion, but.
Lorraine just said they tore a house down, that was.
They did to build the other.
They tore the house down.
Two houses before are now, it's one single.
So there were actually one house on each property?
That's what the documentation says.
Well, then. Where, where is it? Around, all the way around, that's Moreland.
Used to be two houses, now one house.
Go down Gilson.
Right.
Tuck back in there maybe?
Just looking it up, I think it's down from where Rick Murray used to live, or lives.
I agree, I think we need a lot of.
Says 39 Collier.
Looks like it's between Michael Lav and Lincoln, have, on the water side, yeah.
If there were two houses there before, and they both had to pay a betterment, you can't knock one down and say, I don't want to pay a betterment.
Oh, you can't, you're right, because they've already been assessed.
Shouldn't have been a.
So that's why they're seeking an abatement, because they, that's, I can't go for that, I'm not doing that.
And is the second one where they hooked up the sewer, both of them?
I believe so, I don't know.
That's why they're seeking an abatement, because they, they're not, they're trying to merge it.
Right, right, right.
They could have negotiated at the PMS.
The one thing that surprised me is Steve, you know, I kind of, Steve's opinion is usually pretty good, so if he thinks it's a no-brainer, then maybe we're missing something.
Well, I mean, the point is they've halved their usage of the, of that sewer line, if they're only, if they removed one house, in theory.
I know, but if you, if there were two houses there and they were both hooked up to the sewer before.
Right.
I don't think you abate one of them.
See, I think, I'm reading, I'm reading Ms. Kelly saying, there was a piece of property on Collier Road that has been created from two parcels, originally there were two betterments assessed, because two parcels are now one, the second betterment needs to be abated by the Selectmen, the betterment is, whatever, is the one that should be abated. I guess, and I'm not saying, you said there are two houses.
Yeah, she hasn't written further down in the documentation.
If you find it.
On page 89, I believe, in the glasses.
Ninety, 89, oh yeah, used to be two houses, now one, you're right. I don't know what the Board wants to do, but I'm not in favor of it, I mean, you've got two houses, there's a betterment assessed, you merge them, I have no issues with that. That's an issue that they contractually had to a deal when they were buying the lots or selling the lots, and, you know, why should we abate it because now there was only one house? That's what, the lots were assessed the betterment, it goes with the land, now they're merging it, I have no problems with that, but the town should get paid, because that's when it was assessed, when there were two homes there.
Right.
Well, why don't we wait till the next meeting, so maybe someone, someone in the assessor's office, maybe Steve Gardner, one of those guys know about it.
All right, so we'll just put that off to the next meeting, Lorraine?
Sure.
Get a little bit more information on that, just so we can make an informed decision. Okay. All right, so moving on to the next item is a discussion of vote for the Drain Layer License Renewals, which is right before the abatement information. So we just need to go through and approve the drain, so annual renewal.
More a motion?
Well, it's before, it was out of order.
All right, sorry, I'm still looking at this, where are we, Drain Leaders?
Will the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Drain Layer License Renewal for Laminar Construction DBA Costello Contracting?
Second.
You read them separately, or?
Whatever you want, they're written.
Sure. Move by Mr. Harris, I mean, move by Ms. Vignani, second by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you want me to do them all at once? Does anyone have a?
Do you have to abstain from any of them?
No.
Okay.
All right. Will the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Drain Layer License Renewal for McEckren Contracting? Will the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Drain Layer License for Joseph Manomi? Will the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Drain Layer's License for PF Spencer Jr., for E.L. Marguettes &amp; Sons, Inc., for Iaria Brothers, Inc., for McDougal Brothers Enterprises, for Ringler Excavating Corp., for Burrito Environmental Services, for Sean Farrell Excavating, and for DJ Equipment Construction Company, Inc.
Second.
Move by Ms. Vignani, second by Mr. Harris, any discussion? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Tony. Next item on the agenda is an annual declaration for the temporary increase of population that we need to vote to acknowledge for purposes of the ABCC, and we are projecting the population to rise to 28,500 for 2018.
How do we get that?
I don't know.
Why don't we say 38,000, how about that? Does that mean we get?
We use the same estimate the last four years that I've been here. I checked Captain Cameron on it every year, she anticipates any rise in the population community, and if it does not.
Oh, in Heritage Days, I think it goes up to 10, 15,000.
64,000.
Just, just questioning.
So we don't, we don't verify that number at all?
Well, there's really no way to verify it.
Put a toll booth, a few, few toll booths, and figure who's got stickers or something.
Go down on July 3rd and count.
Right.
A lot of people from Noel coming down.
Exactly, yeah, those normal people.
Don't let me, I go to Moshfield.
All right, motion?
Will the Board of Selectmen approve the 2018 seasonal population estimate? As of July 10th, 2018, our resident population estimate is 28,500.
Second. Move by Ms. Vignani, second by Ms. Canfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Next is a discussion and vote for a one-day liquor license for the Silent Chef, who's holding an event at the Mountain Bank this week on the 11th from 5:30 to 7:30 on Front Street. I think this is a renovation at Mountain Bank, that they're having a little celebration and reopening.
On a motion?
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
All right, I'll move the Board of Selectmen to approve a one-day wine and malt license at Mountain One Bank located at 54 Front Street for the following event, Silent Chef on Thursday, January 11th, from 2018, from 5:30 p.m. until 7:30 p.m.
Second.
Move by Ms. Danahy, second by Mr. Vignani, all in favor?
Aye.
Can I apologize, I missed the memorial bench donations. There's so little on this agenda that they're, it's all squished up. So, we've had many memorial benches donated this year, this seems to be the longest list that I've seen.
Well, part of this is the five benches that will be installed out at Situate Lighthouse for the CPC project, but we happen to have five donations alongside the CPC project for the trash receptacles and the benches, you see that point. So, those benches will be installed, they're supposed to be installed in the summer, they're still on order, they're not in yet, everybody's paid for the deposit, the money, we want to send them their tax letter for their donations, so I want to get those up right away, so we put them on here altogether.
Okay, terrific. Any questions?
Nope, it's great.
Okay, thank you.
The town takes care of them, pays for the installation, and it's a nice creative branch.
What donation pays for all that?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but they're all the same, they're granite and so forth.
You can describe what you want on it.
At the lighthouse.
Are they granite at the lighthouse too?
They're all going to be wood.
The wood there.
Oh, they're wood?
They're a lot more comfortable. They're replacing what's there now.
Oh. But these five are, aren't those, these aren't the lighthouse ones, are they?
Five of these are the lighthouse benches, yes.
But my point is, is we're consistent in what we do, the town, they put the same type of benches either, I thought it was all granite.
At the lighthouse, because so many people, it was a CPC project that was approved in town meeting, because so many people enjoy sitting out there, the granite benches are really not very comfortable.
Yeah, no backs.
So the decision was made to do beautiful wooden benches.
Nice.
Nice. Okay.
Just one question about, one question about the wooden ones, so are the, are there going to be plaques on them?
Yes, there will be, yeah.
So if some reason that those are damaged, they can just replace the plaques?
The tax.
I mean, they can replace them.
Okay.
Problem is, sometimes people go around stealing things, like, you know, when you see the milestones for like Boston, 20 miles, and Plymouth, they had the Plymouth seal, and people have gone around and plucked them right out of the granite, so, I'm not saying they shouldn't, but every so often, you'll find, remember, somebody down at North Situate, at the train station, they're pulling down the copper.
On the canopy.
Canopy, on the canopy, so that's why I say you never know.
Yeah, these are personalized plaques of the family's gift to the town of Situate, remembering the person's name with a saying that they choose, it'll be drilled into the bench, it'll be flat against it, so it doesn't catch people's clothes and things like that.
Okay.
We've never had a problem with the granite benches are engraved, so unless they steal[1610.41] The granite benches are engraved, so unless they steal a whole bench, we've never had a problem down there.
Yeah. Great. Okay, thank you. So, why don't I, why don't I thank those that have donated before we have a motion? So, to thank Elizabeth Marin and Fox Butterfield, Mark Chase, Kevin Malloy, Matthew Tice, Sandra Kingsland, Clem Barstow, and Robert Hebert. So, thank you very much for the donations. Then I'll take a motion.
Are those the ones who donated, or the ones in memory of?
The ones that donated.
No.
The donated.
Okay, good. Nice. Move to accept 2017 memorial bench donations to the town of Situate, a total $18,550.
Second.
Move by Ms. Daney, second by Ms. Vignani. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thank you very much.
It's nice, it's a nice project and nice way to commemorate those that have gone. All right, so next is correspondence. Clerk Daney.
Just wanna say that there is a, to all the town employees, there's a Steve Jambowski's retirement celebration, which is going to be held January 10th, 6:00 PM at the Barker Tavern. It's a dinner, and if anybody's interested, please feel free to contact the assessor's office to, to be able to attend. Other than that, that's it?
Yep, there's one more.
Oh, there are? All right. 2018 Winter Film, oh, this actually is really good. I wish we could put this on TV. I don't know if we can, we should. Maybe we can get it on Facebook, but also put it on TV for the loop. All right, 2018 Winter Foreign Film Series, sponsored by the Sister Situate, or Situate Sister City Project. It's gonna be held at the St. Mary's Nativity Parish Center, January 18th. At 6:00 PM, there's the movie The Untouchables. Untouchables, I take that back. January 20th, Le Balloon Rouge, The Red Balloon. Many people probably remember it as kids, I think I remember it in elementary school, kid running up and down the streets of Paris or one of the cities.
Don't keep it away.
Chasing a balloon. It's, it's heart-wrenching. Song of the Sea, a 2014 animated fantasy drama about a 10-year-old Irish boy and his mute sister. So, this is both, I guess, it must be both French and Irish film festival.
We have two sister cities now.
That's right. And then we have February 1st, Waking Ned Divine, actually, it's 1988. It is a great comedy. Highly recommend it. No one's saying anything other than it's an Irish film, you'll like it. February 15th, 6:00 PM, Le Grand Vedrouille. I'm terrible at French, but it's a World War II classic, so I'll leave it at that, 1966. And then February 22nd, Washington's Birthday, Some Mother's Son, another 1980, 96 Irish film about the friendship between two mothers and some IRA sons who were in prison. There's a suggested donation of $10. Again, if you're interested, contact, actually, contact, I guess you could say, Selectmen's office, we'll have it, we'll get it on the Facebook page. And it's already on. There you go, go to our Facebook page. Finally, what do we have here?
A letter from a resident.
Is this it?
Yep.
We received a phone call from a resident, Mr. Charlie Sullivan, who wanted to say thank you for a job well done on the roads.